Good afternoon. The Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing is now called to order. Today is Thursday, April 7th. The time now is 1:42. Notes with this public hearings were disseminated via email to all centers, all main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, March 31st, and again on Tuesday, April 5th. Again, today is Thursday, April 7th, and the time is 1:42. The following items will be heard for this afternoon. My colleagues and for the people of Guam will be hearing simultaneously both bills. Bill Number 260-36 LS introduced by Speaker Theresa M. Turlai, an act to repeal public law 34-44 relative to reducing liquid fuel taxes by 4 cents per gallon to raise prior to January 1st, 2018, and Bill 261-36 LS also introduced by Speaker Theresa Turlai, an act to repeal public law 34-44 relative to reducing liquid fuel tax rates by... Actually just eliminating the fuel tax. To eliminating the liquid fuel tax on Bill 261. With that, general rule for this public hearing. Those testifying on behalf of both Bills 260-36 and 261-36, they have been invited to the panel, and we have five directors from five agencies from the government of Guam. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Preferably five minutes. And if you need additional time, we'll allow the extra time. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by the members of the committee. Oral testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Reminder, the agenda is Bill 260 and 261. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individuals testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony or may be able to be asked to leave or be escorted or removed from the room. Fair warning, if you don't maintain proper form decorum, you will be asked to leave or remove. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. You state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me today. We'll begin with the author of the bills, Speaker Theresa Turlai. We have the Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. And some of our colleagues here have their counterparts. We have Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Tony Hatta, Senator Telo Tadegui, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Jim Moylan, and Senator Sabina Perez. The individuals that are here to testify directly from different agencies will begin, will identify each one of you. We have Richard Bannon from Guam Mass Transit. Am I correct? Regional. And then we have Lester Carlson from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. We have Daphne Simizou from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. We have Mr. Ed Byrne from the Department of Administration. We have Ben Sariola from the Department of Public Works. We have Angel Sablon from the Executive Director from the Mayor's Council of Guam. We will now begin with asking the author of the bill. Madam Speaker, if you can, please make your opening statement on both bills, preferably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to pull both bills together because I had them prepared separately. So I thank you for your patience and to all of those who are here today. Thank you for being here. Before I begin on the bills, if I could, just please, I'd like to introduce my counterpart for today. She's the acting speaker, Audrey Sonko. She's an eighth grader at St. Anthony Catholic School, who's involved in many extracurricular activities like the National Junior Honor Society and volleyball. So she competed in the oratorical contest for Youth Month. That's why she is here today. So she is presently thinking of having a career in medicine. And the theme for the oratorical contest was strength in unity. So this is Audrey Sonko from St. Anthony Catholic School. We've had a very busy day, so she's been very busy today. And thank you again. Okay, I'll begin. So I'm going to begin with Bill 261, which is the more encompassing bill. And Bill 261-36 LS is an act to repeal Article 4 and Article 5 of Chapter 26, Title 11 of the Guam Code relative to eliminating the liquid fuel tax. Bill 261 was introduced to provide some relief to all consumers of gasoline by removing the local liquid fuel tax charged on every gallon of gas sold. And while there are many different factors that we have very little control over impacting the price of fuel globally, removing our local tax is one part of the gas price we can change, and it is something we can change immediately. Currently, every gallon of gasoline is taxed an additional 15 cents through the local liquid fuel tax. There's also another 4 cents charged for the automotive surcharge and another 4 cents for the mass transit automotive surcharge. Altogether, that is a tax of an additional 23 cents per gallon for non-diesel fuel. If you fill up your tank with about 15 gallons of gas every week, that's for the small cars, that's about $180 in liquid fuel tax you're charged. This bill takes care of everyone, especially the hard-working middle class already trying to make ends meet with one, two, or three jobs. And we want to be able to put those dollars back in the gas consumers' pockets, especially during these uncertain times. The fiscal note estimates the impact of the Bill 261 to be between 9.6 million and 10.5 million reduction in the revenue for the Guam Highway Fund. The intention of this bill is not to reduce the appropriations to the agencies currently funded by the Guam Highway Fund. I know there's been a lot of fear put into these agencies that they will be defunded, but this bill does not do that. Instead, I am proposing that we prioritize the current $61 million, $61 million in excess general fund revenues for this fiscal year and future general fund monies to pay for these critical services like road repairs, mass transit, and village road services. By using general fund monies rather than the revenues from the liquid fuel taxes, we can help lower gas prices for all gas consumers and small businesses and still maintain all of the critical government services currently funded by the Guam Highway Fund. I absolutely believe that the government services like village road repairs and critical services provided by the mayors, the Guam Rapid Transit Authority, and the Department of Revenue and Taxation are important and should be funded, but I don't think our road repairs should be paid on the backs of our gas consumers only. When the legislature recently heard a bill and passed it regarding permits for the bigger trucks to use the roads, we saw that the fees and the fines charged to these companies were very low and exemptions to the weight limits were being allowed over the course of at least three years. Even though we had heard in previous years from DPW that a bulk of the damage to the roads comes from large vehicles and their heavy weights on the roads. The burden of the road repair should not lie on the shoulders of the residential customers, consumers. Bill 261-36 prioritizes our families who are struggling to pay for gas, rent, and utilities by removing the local liquid fuel tax, and it will force a redirection of our general fund revenues so that village road repairs and other critical government services can continue uninterrupted. And if that is not crystal clear, I will propose an amendment to the committee to ensure that there is no misunderstanding in that regard. And now the gas companies have assured us that these savings, if this bill is passed, will be passed on to the consumers. So I'd like to read the letters. I've got one dated April 7th from SPPC. "We thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 260 and 261, and we would be pleased if you accept this letter as our submission to the Committee on the Bill. We believe that the reduction in liquid fuels tax, whether such reduction is a total or part reduction as presented in Bill 260 or 261 if enacted, would be passed on to the consumer. The simple logic behind this broad statement is that the current marketplace fuel price determination is made including the legislated requirement to collect and remit liquid fuels tax on the volume sold to Guam's consumers. If the requirement to collect and remit the liquid fuels tax no longer exists, whether in part or total, it would not be included as a factor in our future price determinations. It would not exist. The change brought about by the bills would not provide any benefit or assistance to our organization. However, it is highly likely to benefit Guam's consumers even if only to a modest extent. Sincerely, Douglas Dean, CEO, South Pacific Petroleum Corporation." Another one dated April 7th by IPNE. "Dear Speaker Turlai, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed legislation. There are many worldwide factors beyond control which have been driving up costs for all consumers. In this regard, we support the proposed legislation which will reduce the liquid fuel tax in Guam and have the net effect to reduce costs for Guam consumers. As a collector and remitter of liquid fuel taxes, we are prepared to support and implement the proposed legislation. Sincerely, Stephen Carrara, General Counsel, IPNE Holdings LLC." I would propose to my colleagues that if these gas companies are assuring us that these savings are going to be passed on to the consumers, and that we have these excess revenues, then that we commit to do the same, to pass these savings on to the consumers, continue to fund critical services. Sisus Masi. Oh, and so Bill 260 is slightly different in that it, Bill 261 repeals the liquid fuels tax altogether. Bill 260 repeals at a very minimum the 4 cent increase that was passed in 2018. The impact would be 3.4 million and 3.6 million in revenues. So again, if you fill up your tank with about 15 gallons of gas every week for a year, repealing, this would repeal 4 cents for every gallon of gas. Sisus Masi, Madam, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. With that, I would ask the directors, we'll begin with Mr. Carlson. BBMR, sir, you're first to testify, and you'll be followed by Mr. Byrne, and then Revenue and Tax, and then DPW. Then we'll go back to Richard, and then straight to Angel. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Hafada senators of the 36th Guam Legislature, and your colleagues. Congratulations to all of our young and aspiring future leaders of Guam. Nice to see you here. I just have some general comments, sir. I thank the speaker for the clarification which is not currently reflected in Bill 260 and Bill 261 on the funding source, and I guess we're going to anticipate a revised submission either through the committee or the speaker. Suffice it to say, the proposed funding source doesn't need to be discussed since it appears that it's being rescinded. The I would also like to call attention to the comment that is reflected in Bill 260, starting on page 1 and continuing on page 2. The increase in the liquid fuel tax, and I'm reading from Bill 260 now, "As a result, 19 village road projects were completed in FY '18. 11 village road projects were completed in fiscal '20, and 11 village projects in fiscal '21." I thank the speaker for including the cause and effect of the increase in the tax and the work that now Director Ben Sariola's department has done with the resources made available to them. I note that the same acknowledgement of accomplishments is not reflected in Bill 261. So for the record, I'd like just to be able to provide the public with some context as to how the funds were actually utilized for public benefit. And again, I thank the speaker for providing that information in Bill 260. I also see similarities with the beyond our control portion as reflected in the testimonies from the oil companies, and I think that is probably a valid statement. But I do want to ask, and maybe this will be further clarified either through, again, the committee version or a speaker's revised version. We're talking in Bill 260 and 261 specifically about gasoline. You know, the legislative intent reads gas, 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 right? But the repeal of the entirety of the liquid fuel tax in 261 captures diesel and aviation fuel as well. So I'm hoping that in the process of being able to address consumer costs, which I believe is the objective here, a very, very laudable objective, that there's some consideration in the focus of what it is that we're actually looking at doing so that some of the effects that spill over, as reflected in both the fiscal notes for Bill 260 and 261, the agencies that would be affected if the entirety of the Guam Highway Fund was repealed include the Department of Administration, the Department of Public Works, the Guam Police Department, and Guam Regional Transit Authority, and of course, the Mayor's Council. And I fully appreciate the speaker's comments about not wanting to raise alarms about defunding, and I appreciate that very much. And I also appreciate the change in the funding source that's not reflected currently. There seems to be some very sensible adjustments that have been made, and again, I appreciate that. The passage of time really does help improve things, and public discussion also helps to improve things, so. I was going to talk about the funding source, but I don't believe that's necessary or beneficial to the discussion today. But I do want to remind the public that the 15 cents, just on the gas part, not the surcharge part, right? So if gas is, say, you know, 580 a gallon, it'll go down to 565 because the oil companies have said, whatever they don't have to pay, the consumers will reap that penny per penny benefit, okay? However, let's all realize that if gas, God forbid, goes up to $7 a gallon, we're only going to get the same 15 cents. So I believe the speaker's statements and the concurrence by the oil companies of worldwide oil, sometimes the pricing is beyond local control, and I agree that the speaker's intent is to take something that is of local control and try to pass along the benefit is extremely valuable, laudable, and appropriate. But let's not lose sight of the fact that if it continues to go up, unfortunately, you know, the benefit will be there, but the cost is still going to be felt, unfortunately, by us. Same thing happens if it goes down, and I think we all wish that it goes down, but I'm pleased that there will be some revisions to the bill, that there will be some concerns allayed with the impact on the agencies, and I look forward to the revisions and a substitute bill that reflects that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Mr. Byrne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, senators, and congratulations to the youth leaders. I was never a youth leader, and look what happened to me. I'm sitting here today. Senators have often heard me talking about the large number of special funds, and of course, this Guam Highway Fund is a special fund. Bill 261, if enacted, would of course eliminate one fund, and in normal circumstances, I would think that was a good thing. But in this particular circumstance, we have to deal with the loss of revenues that flow from that. And Madam Speaker, I know you addressed this in how you were going to propose an amendment to effectively replace these revenues. I would point out, however, that the special fund continues from year to year, but any replacement revenues would have to be replaced each year in order to continue to fund these projects which my colleagues here will speak about. Neither of these bills has a sunset that would effectively automatically cure that. A gas tax is not an unusual tax. The federal gas tax does exactly the same thing. It funds infrastructure and mass transportation. It's well understood that the increase in the raw price of fuels and the price of fuel at the pump is very difficult to deal with. It could go up and down by more than the gas tax, as my colleague has just pointed out. So it's important for us to consider how and where replacement revenues would come and how these would be applied to projects, both continuing and new. My remarks will be brief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Ms. Simizou?
Hafada Chairman Sinagastin and also Speaker Turlai, Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, honorable members of the legislature, and also to our youth who are present here today. Thank you for joining, and you know, we have very high hopes for you all, so good luck to you all as you go about your careers. With regards to the liquid fuels tax, as was mentioned in the speaker's opening statement, there are multiple components of the liquid fuels tax. I just wanted to maybe provide some clarification for the body in terms of what the liquid fuel tax components are. There is the diesel fuel, which has a current tax rate of 14 cents per gallon. There is the mass transit automotive surcharge, which has a rate of 4 cents per gallon. There's the gasoline, another liquid fuel component which is charged at a rate of 15 cents per gallon. An automotive surcharge, which is charged at 4 cents per gallon. And there is the commercial aviation component, which is charged at 8 cents per gallon. The way that the liquid fuel tax works is it is a tax that is charged to wholesalers for fuel. And so what will happen with, what happens with regards to tax is that the wholesalers, again, based on the number of gallons that they purchase, the number of gallons that they import, they will pay liquid fuels tax on those, on what they import or bring into Guam, and that is based again on the rates which was indicated as I referred to before. From there, the fuel is then sold to retailers, gas stations, who actually pay BBT on the fuel that they sell to our consumers. And I just wanted to make sure I shared that with the body because you want to make sure that it's very clear, I guess, the flow of taxes and how that kind of works. And with regards to the average 2019 to 2020 fiscal year, the average that we saw for diesel fuel was about $945, almost $946,000. The surcharge for mass transit was about $260,000. The gasoline, another liquid fuel, was 5.5 million, a little bit over $5.5 million. The surcharge, the automotive surcharge, came up to a little bit over 1 point, just shy of 1.5 million. And for commercial aviation, it was about $3.9 million, or a total of about a little over 12 point, almost $12.2 million. And that was the average for fiscal years 2019 to 2020. I did actually provide to Senator Sinagastin some information with regards to the historical data, and also there is data that is in the fiscal note which was provided by BBMR on these two bills. In terms of the breakdown, what we see is that the majority of the taxes that we see, 46% for those years, is is related to gasoline. The next highest amount that is being charged or is paid is 32%, and that's for commercial aviation. And this is similar to, or similar to what we saw as well, even pre-2018. And of course, as we know, 2018 was when we did see the rates increase by 4 cents per gallon for diesel fuel, 4 cents per gallon for gasoline and other liquid fuel, and 4 cents per gallon for commercially and 4 cents per gallon for commercial aviation. And again, from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, we just wanted to make sure that we clarified for the body how the flow of taxes work and how liquid fuel tax is assessed. Sujus Masim.
Thank you. This is supposed to be Mr. Ariola. You're next, and then we go to Richard after you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Sinagastin. Members of the committee, honorable senators, welcome. Thank you very much for having this hearing, and of course, to our student leaders, welcome to the Guam Legislature. If I could just read my testimony. "The Department of Public Works strongly opposes the elimination of the liquid fuel tax as proposed in Bill 261-36. The Department also opposes any reduction in the liquid fuel taxes as proposed in Bill 260-36. These taxes make up a significant portion of the Guam Highway Fund, which in part funds DPW highway maintenance and construction programs. Any reduction in this funding would severely impact DPW's ability to maintain and repair our island's critical roadway network and stormwater infrastructure, as well as our ability to effectively respond to flood mitigation and related issues resulting from the rise in extreme weather events." If I could just stop there, that was Plan A as I read the bill. And in listening to the Speaker's opening remarks, as discussed earlier also, the Plan B would be to supplant the reduction with some other funding. I didn't see that in the bill, so that's why my testimony reads like this. "The recent American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and the additional funding per year over the next five years, provided by the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act to our current federal highway administration funding, will provide a much-needed infusion to our existing programs. However, this will be limited to only our island's routed roads as classified by the Department in conjunction with FHWA. Our current funding sources are insufficient to keep pace with the required work and escalating costs of goods and services experienced worldwide. The full financial impact of the Department can be determined more closely if final funding reductions are proposed." Thank you for the opportunity to comment on these two bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ariola. Rich Banis, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Speaker Turlahi, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, committee members, honorable senators, and our future leaders of Guam. Hafedeh, my name is Richard Ibanez. I am the interim executive manager of the Guam Regional Transit Authority, also known as GRTA. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on Bills Number 260-36 and 261-36. Our agency's mission is to provide reliable, accessible, and cost-effective public transportation services. At this time, GRTA has 59 employees and 33 drivers who service over 200 private transit riders per day, Monday through Saturday, and over 300 fixed route riders per day, Monday through Friday. Our average customers consist of people who need a ride to school and work, manamku, with little to no other transportation options. People with wide range of disabilities, dialysis patients, and other residents in need of reliable means to reach their destinations. With the current state of our island and with consideration of the ongoing pandemic and recovery activity, GRTA has played an essential role in bringing people to necessary services, medical appointments, and other important matters. Right now, the GRTA budget is stretched thin. I would be remiss to acknowledge that despite our limited financial resources, we need to hire additional bus drivers and agency staff to adequately fulfill our mission. Repealing the liquid fuel tax will affect our appropriation from the Guam Highway Fund, may lead to reductions in overall revenue, and severely jeopardize the ability of GRTA to sustain its operational services. I would like to note for the committee that the funding provided to GRTA in the bipartisan infrastructure law, the bill, is limited in scope for eligible uses and other funding is dependent on the program or grant that it is provided under. Some programs in the BIL are competitive grants that Guam must apply and compete for. Other programs are calculated formula grants that are limited for specific uses. Moreover, such funding will be provided over several years and not all at once. It is incorrect to expect that most of the funding from BIL can be used to cover the cost of the several programs and agencies funded by the Guam Highway Fund. On behalf of GRTA and the people we serve, we stand in opposition to Bills Number 260-36 and 261-36. I look forward to working with this body towards the creation of a more effective and sustainable solutions for Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banis. Mr. Sablon Angel?
Good afternoon. I come this afternoon with neither yes or no. We will provide written testimony within the timeframe allotted, but because of the open government law, many of the mayors and myself cannot discuss these two bills without publicly announcing our meeting, so that happened today. And even at that meeting, it was very obvious to me, and I wrote down some notes and questions, that even the mayors themselves have questions and/or doubts about the proposal. And I appreciate, Madam Speaker, for letting us know, even emailing our president, that the repeal or the lowering of these tax will not affect the funding for the Mayor's Council of Guam and its services. I have no doubt that the Speaker is very sincere in her message, but there are 14 others in this legislative body, and hopefully, they all agree not to reduce the funding for the Mayor's Council of Guam. But until the budget bill is passed, we will never know if that is really going to happen. Everyone wants lower prices and lower taxes. But are we giving our people false hope that repealing the liquid fuels tax will really pass on to the consumer? These two bills need further review. While at face value, repealing the liquid fuels tax looks good, but in the long run, will it do us good? Or are we going to come back in the 37th Guam Legislature to impose fuel taxes again due to roads going into disrepair and no funds to repair them? Yes, Madam Speaker, please prioritize the use of the Guam Highway Fund and allow MCOG to be properly funded instead of being chastised every year by the Office of Public Accountability Audit that giving MCOG an appropriation from the Guam Highway Fund is not an appropriate use of those funds. As a user, I will happily welcome any tax reduction, but as a provider of services that makes use of funds from the liquid fuels tax, I must be cautious. So I am torn, as I am sure many mayors are, to what the real benefit to our island as a whole will be. We are open to working with the author and sponsors of the bills to make it beneficial to all users and providers. We have seen in previous legislatures and laws the lowering of taxes in other areas, but did it really reduce costs to our people? Are we saying that if we need housing costs to go down, we should lower the minimum wage or wages? As I mentioned earlier, while we appreciate giving some money back to our people, at the same time, are we going to burden the very senators to be next to you in the future with paying more taxes because our roads are in disrepair? And we will submit the testimony, and I will have the comments of all the mayors providing that testimony, because like I said, it is not a unanimous support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sablon. Madam Speaker, would you like to ask a question, or would you like to be last? And we'll have our colleagues ask questions, or would you like to begin?
Oh, no, I'd love to answer some questions, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. First, I want to say to the panel, Sujus Masim for being here. I am very honored that the whole fiscal team seems to be here. Thank you for that. I know we've certainly had some fiscal bills that have been heard here without any of you to grace our halls, so I am very grateful that today is the day we get all of you. Second, I understand that the agencies, especially the mayors, would be concerned that if we reduce revenues to that special fund, does that mean that their appropriations are going to be impacted? And I hope I made it very clear that this bill does not reduce your appropriation. Your appropriation remains the same level, same thing, mass transit, DPW. At least for fiscal year 2022. And going forward in fiscal's year 2023 and thereafter, of course, the budgets have to reflect that, and the appropriations will be what the legislature set, and they would just set a different funding source at that point. To be very clear, it would be general fund versus that special fund, if the special fund did not have enough. This special fund is also funded by other sources besides liquid fuels tax. Third, I just, you know, again, we're trying to help the families that are struggling. You know, we're trying to hear them, and this is one of the major costs that they face, is gas. There's no sunset in this bill because it was not intended to end. It was intended to go forward. Forward for the second half of FY 2022, and forward thereafter for the FY 23 budget that's coming up. That this would, of course, if passed, have to be reflected in those future budgets. So my question, I guess, is, I'll start with BBMR. And if we removed the commercial, so, let me start with revenue and taxation. So you outlined the different portions that we receive in liquid fuels tax from the different types of industry. One is from the different types of gas, and you pointed out the commercial aviation. And if we removed that tax from this bill and therefore kept the commercial aviation tax in place, I heard this suggestion from Mr. Carlson this morning on the radio. But if we left that intact, and we did not repeal the commercial aviation portion of the liquid fuels tax, according to the fiscal note, the impact is 3.4 million dollars less, and so the total impact then would go down from 10 to about 7.1 million. That would be correct, right?
Thank you, Speaker Turlahi. So if you refer to the fiscal notes, if you'll notice, the way that the fiscal notes reads is there is an analysis based on the data that we pulled from our system, and also the analysis that BBMR had pulled separately. And the numbers that you saw are very similar. I mean, there is a difference, but I believe that the range is reasonable. And so again, you know, we agree with the information that is in the fiscal note.
All right. Yeah, the reason I'm asking about that because if there was a concern now, the bill does not put any funding language in because what we were simply pointing out is that the agencies will, in fact, on top of the $62 million in excess revenues and our local fund revenues, receive ARP funds and infrastructure funds. And so since those were mentioned, I guess I'd like to ask for the record, can DPW tell us how much in ARP and infrastructure funds they expect to receive?
For this fiscal year?
Madam Speaker, if I may, clarification. The ARP funds are ineligible for this use?
We're not using them. You are, so I'm asking how much they're getting.
But you asked him how much he's getting.
Yeah, how much they're getting.
Right, so if I could make the point that...
I'm asking DPW how much they're getting in ARP and infrastructure funds.
Our initial notice was a little over 20 mil, 20 million.
In which?
ARP.
Okay, and what about infrastructure?
I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay. Yeah, so I know you said in your testimony that you're going to use that for highway purposes, the infrastructure funds, right? Not for village streets?
The federal highway.
Right.
Funding, which is presently, it's 16 mil a year, and that will increase over the next five years by an average of about 2 mil a year.
Okay. So do you know how much in infrastructure funds you'll be getting?
I'm sorry, I can't...
You'll be allocated in infrastructure funds?
I'm sorry, I really can't understand.
Oh. In federal infrastructure funds? Will you be receiving any?
Federal infrastructure funds?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Not the regular federal highway, from the new infrastructure bill?
Right, right. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't have that number there.
Okay. All right, then. What about mass transit? Do you know how much you'll be receiving from ARP or infrastructure?
Madam Speaker, for ARP, we have 2.5 million, and for the bipartisan infrastructure law, we're expecting 11 million within the course of five years.
All right. Yeah, and I share your desire that those funds be used, you know, over and above what we are discussing today. Today, we're discussing the liquid fuels tax, which affects the Guam Highway Fund, which we have dedicated in the past for the repair of village street roads. However, yeah, I am just pointing out, because the bill does not talk about funding using those funds. It talks about those funds are available to you. You are expected to use those funds, and we are expecting to receive 62 million in the excess revenues. If... I guess, Lester, maybe if you could help me. If we take the estimate that you've given us, that's 10 and a half million. I took the higher one, 10 and a half million dollar impact of reduction if this bill passes and apply it. You said that was an annual estimate, so we apply it to the remaining six months of fiscal year 2022? That would have an impact of about 5.25 million?
That's about right, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's... So I think that 5.25 million to be covered out of the 62 million is even easier, perhaps, but, all right. When there are shortfalls in the special funds, for example, we were told there were shortfalls in the FY 21 special funds, and we saw there was a shortfall in this Guam Highway Fund in FY 21 as well, about $3 million. So I wanted to know, did they take away? We did not see on our side in the legislature any repeal of appropriations to any of the agencies. So as far as we were concerned, those were all still intact, and we had been assured at every fiscal hearing that we had that we could not touch the excess funds until they were used first to cover the shortfalls in the special funds. So were the shortfalls, were you impacted by the shortfalls? So where the shortfalls, were you impacted by the shortfalls at, at DPW?
For this fiscal year, no, not yet.
Right? And so we're currently having a shortfall in the Guam Highway Fund of a million dollars? We had a shortfall, 3 million dollars in 2021, but you, DPW was not denied their funds, right?
I haven't received notice yet. If, if, if there is a, if there is a severe shortfall and they tell us to cut back, we will abide by what comes out from BBMR or DOA.
Did mass transit receive its full appropriation for FY 21?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Would you still be opposed to this bill if the mass transit appropriations remained intact?
Well, if our budget is, for FY 23 was to change...
FY 22, we're in.
I'm sorry, FY 22?
Mm-hmm.
I, I'd still have to look more into the, the bill, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Ariola, would you, would, would DPW still be opposed to the bill if their appropriations remained intact?
We, we function based on the appropriation given to DPW. That's a policy call from this legislature. Whether we get it from the Guam Highway Fund, tourist attraction fund, general fund, whatever funds we receive, that is our budget and that's a policy call from this legislature.
All right, exactly.
We will abide by that.
Yes. That's my understanding as well, that every shortfall in the special funds that we have seen has been covered by general fund excess revenues. We are trying by this bill to prioritize that that is going to happen, it's going to cover roads and it's going to cover the mayors and it's going to cover the audit and whatever else was covered before without putting that additional burden on the taxpayers. Mr. Chair, that's all my questions except that there was a testimony by the Guam Chamber. If I could read that? We just received it while we were in here. Mr. Chair, is that all right? If I read this testimony from the Guam Chamber?
Yes, please.
So we just received this while we were in here, otherwise I would have read it earlier. Yes, so April 7th, to the Honorable Joseph Augustine, Chairperson, "We appreciate the opportunity to provide our comments on both bills, 260 and 261. The chamber testified in 2017 against the increase in the liquid fuel tax, expressing our concern with the rising cost of living for our local residents. We also highlighted our apprehension about the proposed use of the funds that were earmarked in the bill for road repair and construction projects. The bill eventually became law on January 2018. Since then, we have seen the increase in the business privilege tax, utility increases, minimum wage increases and real estate taxes for real properties appraised at 1 million or more. All these additional burdens on our people and the community were compounded with the onslaught of issues related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The pandemic leveled our tourism industry and has left thousands without jobs and benefits. We are thankful for the financial assistance of the federal government and the continued support of the Department of Defense. Without this assistance, so many more people would have been devastated from the financial impact of the lockdown. Further federal funds have thankfully kept our economy afloat instead of plummeting to a complete collapse. We applaud the author who introduced both bills and we support each measure. If one or the other bill is passed, it would go a long way in directing, directly impacting the average citizen of Guam. The cost of fuel has a direct negative impact to every individual who requires it for transportation, but we must keep in mind that it also affects their families. More money used to pay for fuel means less money to pay for vital necessities like food, shelter, power and water. The inflation sweeping our island, the nation and the world is undeniable. The escalation of the cost of goods and the services will continue to increase as we navigate our way in the midst of this global crisis. Any small measure of relief that can be provided to our people is desperately needed. As noted in the bill 261, federal aid from American Rescue Plan Act provided the government of Guam with 578.7 million, of which 23 million was allocated to the Department of Public Works. Additionally, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act awarded Guam approximately 193 million, 95 million of which is earmarked to rebuild roadways and bridges through the territorial highway program over the next five years. These funds would provide ample funding for the government of Guam for needed road repairs over the next few years, which was originally earmarked to be funded by the proceeds of liquid fuel tax. As noted in the recent media interview with Speaker Theresa Lai, the government of Guam is also looking at $63 million in excess general funds, which when added to the federal support, places the government in good financial position to make the decision to provide 23 cents per gallon savings to the residents of Guam. In addition to the lowering of the complete elimination of the liquid fuel tax, the chamber seeks the Guam Legislature's support to have a gross receipts tax amnesty on fuel for the next two years. This tax amnesty would immediately provide significant relief at the gas pump of about 30 cents per gallon. The additional savings would greatly impact the power of the dollar for our hardworking residents and enable them to use their savings in other ways that families desperately need today and over the next few years as we all work together to move out of this crisis. Closing, the chamber wholeheartedly supports the intent of both bills and we humbly request this 36 Guam Legislature to not only expeditiously pass this measure, but we also urge you to consider our proposal for tax amnesty for fuel over the next two years. Thank you for your opportunity to provide comments at the hearing of bill 260 and 261. Sijos Massey, Catherine Castro, President, Guam Chamber of Commerce. Sijos Massey, Mr. Chair.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask one question before I ask any of my colleagues of the Department of Revenue and Tax. Of the testimony provided by the chamber, what other taxes does the liquid fuel tax from the vendors, do they pay? What other taxes do they pay other than the 14 cents per gallon? Ms. Simzul?
So the, in addition to the 14 cents per gallon, there is also, again, the wholesalers, right? The ones that import the fuel, they not only do, they not only provide regular gasoline, they also have the diesel fuel that gets charged at 14 cents per gallon. And then also the commercial aviation because they are the source for the fuel for commercial aviation as well, that is 8 cents per gallon. And there are two surcharges, the mass transit automotive surcharge of 4 cents per gallon and the automotive surcharge of 4 cents per gallon.
What other taxes? I, I understand where the liquid fuel tax, the funds come from.
Right.
What other taxes do they pay other than the 14 cents a gallon?
Well, so with regards to this, again, as I mentioned, I wanted to clarify how this would work. They do pay, the liquid fuels taxes paid on the fuel that they import into Guam. And so of course, as they sell that fuel to their, then they transfer those fuels or sell the fuels to the retailers. The retailers pay the BBT on that. This is similar, Mr. Chair, to alcohol tax or tobacco tax, right? Alcohol tax is paid by the wholesaler. Then when the retailer sells it, they pay BBT on the retail sale or again, like tobacco. So it's similar to the, those taxes.
The chamber asked for a tax amnesty. The GRT tax amnesty for fuel? If there's no liquid fuel tax, is that applicable? I mean, is there a GRT tax? I, I'm just curious.
With regards to a tax amnesty on liquid fuel, you know what, I'm not sure how or if, or how that would work in terms of the, the legal mechanics of it. I, I'm not sure how that would work because basically, because it is codified, Mr. Chair, the liquid fuels tax is in law. I, I don't know how that would work.
All right, all right, thank you. My colleagues, Madam Speaker, after the bill, we only have one individual that's, is going to testify. I don't think we have anybody else out there and I want to ask, if it's okay, we're going to have Mr. Sebel Babauta please testify. And Sarnarm, you're going to have a seat for him. He's the only one that's signed up to testify, so I'm going to allow him to speak so that we can do the one round of questioning. And Madam Speaker, you'll be allowed to ask him questions. Go back to you and then, then we'll proceed to go around the, around the table. Mr. Babauta.
Buenos dias, Mr. Chairman and honorable senators and with the student leaders, congratulations on your, on the positions that you are occupying today. My name is Celestine Seal Kus Babauta. I'm the former executive manager of the Guam Regional Transit Authority and a resident of Aguead. With regards to GRTA, I am in support of bills 260-36 LS and 261-36 LS. Great majority of the people of Guam are having to bear excessive cost of gas and this is in addition to the rising food and medical prices. Repealing the gas tax will help the residents of Guam defray gasoline expenses and use funds that they save for other vital needs. Mr. Chairman and honorable senators, part of the Guam Regional Transit Authority's funding comes from the liquid fuel tax. Without funds from the liquid fuel tax, the GRTA will continue to be shortchanged. As a matter of fact, even with such tax, GRTA's budget was still cut by $300,000. GRTA's budget is $2.6 million for FY 22. The cut severely hamper GRTA's ability to effectively perform its mission and complete essential transit projects and manage federal programs that are vital in GRTA's ability to receive federal funds. The liquid fuel tax, when the vehicles begin to be electrified, when electrification begins to occur in Guam with vehicle, vehicles and trucks, other motor vehicles, the liquid fuel tax is going to be very unstable with regards to providing GRTA with stable funding source. The budget cuts that GRTA experienced for FY 22 prevented the agency to hire vital, local budgeted missing essential positions such as program coordinator four, program coordinator one, planner one, work processing secretary and admin assistant. These positions, because they were not budgeted, were not occupied and as a result of that, vital programs such as the disadvantaged business enterprise, social, Title VI, federal financial reports, all of those are not being accomplished. So, so what I'm trying to lead to with regards to the liquid fuel tax is that it's, it's a funding source for GRTA that's not stable. It's, it's a funding source that although GRTA is receiving some funds from that, the entirety of the, the amount that GRTA is budgeted does, is, is not, is not received totally by GRTA. So again, the inability for GRTA to fully receive the $2.6 million and that definitely is, is a big obstacle in GRTA's ability to apply for federal grants. As a matter of fact, GRTA was budgeted under the American Rescue Plan, $912,000 by the Federal Transit Administration. The budget, the proposal for that amount of money was submitted, but it was never fulfilled because there wasn't any program coordinator for, or planner to, to fully complete the information that Federal Transit Administration was requesting. A dedicated source for GRTA is very important, much more than at any time in the history of Guam. Effectively funding GRTA will resolve a wide array of Guam's social challenges. I would like to request that GRTA be funded from the general fund with at least 2%, only 2%. That will enable GRTA to have a funding source that's reliable and be able to fulfill its mission and other requirements. With a safe, so what will a safe and reliable transit system do for the island of Guam? GRTA will afford rights for the poor who are in need of reliable transportation to address their medical needs, find and keep your jobs, and less fortunate students aspiring to seek college education so that they can find better paying jobs who have dependable rights to University of Guam and Guam Community College. Furthermore, GRTA will help reduce climate change, reduce congestion, lessen green gas emission, minimize road repairs if GRTA has provided proper funding, decrease crime rates, contribute in growing Guam's economy, improve the quality of life of island residents. Right now, GRTA is only operating six days a week. Our people of Guam need a transit system seven days a week. Many of our manamku will cannot afford to, to go to church on Sundays. I was asked by an old lady over at Gemat Tranquillidad, Mr. Babauta, if you have mass transit on Sunday, I can go to church. I can go visit my husband over at St. Dominic's, but without transportation on Sunday, come on. Our people of Guam are being shortchanged. In addition, a safe and reliable transit system will help meet the standards of the Guam, Guam Green Growth Program. It will provide the people of Guam with a choice of taking transit or driving and paying five, over $6 worth of gas per gallon. And definitely, a good transit system will cut traffic fatalities and accidents. I would be remiss if I do not specify that having a good transit system will help cut the 8% unemployment rate and the almost 25% poverty rates of the island of Guam. You know, the 50,000 people who are not interested in working, I bet that many of those individuals gave up working because they don't have reliable transportation to find jobs and maintain Several weeks ago, Dr. Hattori and Ms. Calvo, Dr. Hattori from the Homeless Coalition and Ms. Calvo from the Catholic Social Service, they've both clearly specified that the big need for those who are in, who are homeless is transportation. The liquid fuel tax is not adequate. It's, it's not, it's not dependable in providing GRTA with reliable funding source. I want to share two stories to all of you regarding the importance of a transit system. My brother Ivan was renting one of his apartments to an employee of the Sumai Grill. The employee doesn't have to report to work until 7:30 in the morning. However, because he doesn't have any transportation, reliable transportation but transit, this gentleman will walk from Finili to the Hogad Mayor's Office, almost a mile away, to catch the bus at 6:05 in the morning so that he can get there on time. One day, he was drenched with rain because it was raining very hard. He caught pneumonia and he passed away. I was at Honolulu and my eyeglasses broke. I had to take the transit to go to an optometry shop to get my glasses fixed. So imagine, imagine the, the, the number of people, the people of Guam who are, who don't have transportation, who, or who, who are not able to take transit, you know? Many of what they need to get done, their quality of life is certainly being hampered. So, so, Mr. Chairman and senators, again, with regards to transit, I really am begging this legislature to think about a more reliable and more dependable funding source from the, for the Guam Regional Transit Authority. The liquid fuel tax is not adequate. I spent almost three years at the Guam Regional Transit Authority and we did a lot of good things, fortunately with some monies from the liquid fuel tax, but most especially from the Federal Transit Administration. So again, I, I, with regards to... So again, I, with regards to, with regards to transit, bills 260 and 36 LS and 261-36 LS, I believe I support wholeheartedly. And on the other hand, I really ask this legislature again to please consider providing dependable funding for the Guam Regional Transit Authority, perhaps maybe from the general fund. Only 2% of the general fund, I firmly believe, will adequately fund the Guam Regional Transit Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babauta. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for Mr. Babauta?
No, but I wanted to thank you for your testimony, Sidoz Masi. I know that you're very concerned about funding mass transit, but I hear you that if the current funding source is not adequate, then limiting it, our appropriations from that fund only are limiting the ability of mass transit. Thank you, Mr. Babauta. And I really appreciate your request to support the need to provide relief for the people of Guam by repealing the gas act, the relief for the people of Guam. I agree with you, Sidoz Masi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Amanda, do you have any questions for the panel? Mr. Babauta, please stay. We need to complete. We're going to go to the panel now. Senator Amanda Sheldon, do you have any question for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel for being here. I'd like to also introduce my youth counterparts for the day. I have with me Kate Monaloto from the Academy of Our Lady of Guam and John Moore IV from Bishop Bumgartner Memorial School, both competed in the island-wide oratorical contest on Monday and have done very well as student leaders, and so they're here with me today. I'm proud to have them with my office. Thank you again to the panel, and I wanted to ask you, Mr. Babauta, you made a comment that I didn't find in the written testimony, but about the electrification of vehicles. Are you speaking to the fleet at the Regional Transit Authority, or are you speaking to the electrification of vehicles in our community? You mean the trend that we're moving towards and that effect that it will have on the liquid fuel tax overall?
Senator Sheldon, thank you for that question. Let me just say that from the Federal Transit Administration's perspective, the mode of operation with regards to funding transit buses, it would be electrification. So in that regard, again, you know, taxes for gasoline, that's what, that's what we're using for our fleet right now. And on the other hand, let's face it, climate change. Let's face it, you know, green gas emission. Let's face it, Dr. Sheldon and the University of Guam are moving right along with the G3, and electrification is a very vital part of that program. So, you know, again, General Motors is not going to produce any more fossil fuel vehicles after 2030. So Atkins Crowe is already preparing their people. As a matter of fact, if they haven't yet, they are going to be building their charging station. So with regards to the future, Senator Sheldon, definitely there's going to be a decrease in liquid fuel tax if Guam, you know, will continue to move in the direction of addressing climate change and again converting over to electric vehicles.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I thought that's what you were getting at, that we were talking about the sustainability of this special fund. And so I wanted to ask anyone from the administration, maybe from DPW or from Mr. Urbana, from the Transit Authority, what are the movements that we have toward electrification of vehicles? The support that we're building infrastructure for charging stations, is that something that we're talking about right now?
I'll start. Thank you very much, Senator. Yes, we have been looking at electric school buses. The costs right now are anywhere from $350,000 to $400,000 a school bus. An engine, a fuel-engined school bus today runs anywhere from $125,000 to $130,000, $135,000, same passenger level. So it is, it is quite a hefty expense, but you know, we're still doing research on it. We've been looking at that electrical, electric school buses for probably the last three, if not four, months. We don't see any downturn in the pricing, so you know, that's going to be a tough, that's going to be a tough decision to make. In terms of charging stations, I'm not really worried about that because we have bus satellite stations throughout the island, you know, and so I think we'll be sufficient there. It's just the initial investment of an electric school bus.
Thank you for that. But beyond the GovGuam fleet, are we talking about any kind of charging stations or infrastructure support to help the general public move toward electric vehicles?
No, we are not at that stage yet.
Okay, thank you. And it all goes back to the sustainability of the fund. What is the trend that the island is going toward? Are we all moving toward electric vehicles quickly enough and what it's going to do to this fund? So I appreciate the information today. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and to the panel for being here.
Thank you, Senator Sheldon. Senator Chris Dornis, do you have any questions, sir, for the panel?
Sidoz Masi, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the panel for being here. You know, it just seems like this is a pretty cut-and-dry issue. If the legislature is going to find the revenue through the general fund, then it's a wash, really. And that's just going to be dependent on this body. I guess my only question then would be to Mr. Byrne, that if this bill were to pass, say, in the next session, there would be an anticipation, more than likely, that in the current fiscal year, there may be some effects. Do you see it that way?
Senator, could you repeat the question? I only got half.
So if these bills were to pass, say, for example, in the April session, end of this month, and they became law and effectively repealed, would there be an effect in this current fiscal year in your analysis?
Well, as the speaker indicated, the intent, although it's not in the bill, but I guess it's a stated intent, is that the revenue will be replaced. If it's not being funded by drivers paying the liquid fuel tax, then it has to come from the general fund unless there's some other special fund that's actually nominated. And that, of course, at the moment, as the speaker pointed out, there is a $60 million excess revenues over the appropriated revenues, but it's not clear, it's not quite clear to me, you know, because it depends which bill indeed passes and how much the reduction in the tax take will be, but that will have to come from somewhere. And as has already been pointed out, there was already a deficit in this fund, so that plus the deficit will have to be funded by the general fund.
So I guess what I was trying to do is put on the record what you've represented to us in the past, is that special funds that are experiencing a shortfall will be covered by the general fund?
Assuming that the general fund has the ability to cover it, yes.
Okay. So the only situation that we would be under, I guess I can go to Lester on this one, the only situation that we would be under in terms of needing some sort of an appropriation would be in the event that by some crazy turn of events, revenue wasn't tracking and the general fund wasn't healthy enough to take care of shortfalls in special funds. Would that be accurate? Yeah, that's for you, Les. Give me a word.
Thank you, Senator. I'm a little concerned that we are here on 260 and 261, the verbiage that we're talking about with the general fund isn't in the bill. We're being asked to respond to something we didn't prepare for. I'm also concerned that, you know, as Mr. Byrne stated and Senator Sin Augustine's going to have to deal with, is if we're going to move in this direction for this fiscal year, it's not exactly cut and dried, with all due respect, because how you take a measure you may pass with a revised bill and fold that into '23, '24, and '25 remains to be seen. It's really going to be a paradigm shift in what it is that we're doing because the Guam Highway Fund, the current budget, basically the revenue is $21.8 million. The last special fund report we sent to the legislature shows that it's tracking $1.1 million short. And if gas prices continue to affect, you know, our residents, there may be a further cessation of the consumption of gas because that kind of seems to be how people react to prices. So I would like to defer comment until we see the revisions because right now it's speculative and we're kind of just moving away from the bill. And as Senator Sin Augustine said, we're here to talk about the bill. Well, there's nothing that says, I appreciate the intent to revise the bill, but I would really like to reserve comment until we see that.
Well, that makes sense. So that's why, I mean, I understand it's not cut and dry. It's cut and dry on the, on the level of saying, hey, you got two pots of money, right? If you're sitting there, you know, it's like going to Nana's house and she made two pots of kudzu, right? Which pot are you going to draw from? If you're saying the kudzu's there, right? So the thing is, is that, that's why I elicited the question, is that then more than likely than what you're saying is you'd like to see the markup on this bill, which would require then, you know, you'll be coming back anyways if the bill hits the floor because we'll be in committee of the whole. So, you know, I guess that, I guess that question can be addressed at that time, but what you're saying at this point is it's not cut and dry. For us, it's cut and dry in terms of funding source, but budgetary-wise, you're saying it's not cut and dry.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I just wanted to put on the record, because I seem to have heard that throughout your, you know, discussions on the bill openly in the media as well as here, so I think it's important to get these things on the record here because, you know, this is where we make our decisions based on what's said here, so.
You know, Senator, it's happened before where, you know, we've had a second public hearing because a bill was revised. It may be appropriate in this case because we're not prepared to talk about any shifts that are being discussed.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I would think that it has to. I mean, you know, really, we've got a special fund, and if you're talking about wiping out a funding source traditionally that's been established as a funding source that goes to, you know, different services within the government, if you're going to repeal it outright, I would think it would almost make sense that you have to replace it with something. Otherwise, you have to have those agencies come before you and say how it's going to affect them or how the administration is going to make a decision on what their priorities are, right? I mean, that's really how it works. They'll either transfer, you know, use transfer authority and whatever else and backfill it, or you go in and do a supplemental appropriation. I mean, that's the mechanics of it. That's why I'm putting it before us. So you're right to say the bill doesn't state that yet, but I'm sure, obviously, as the speaker has put forward, that's the intention. So, you know, and you're right to say that, you know, you'll make a stronger comment on that afterwards. I just wanted to get it on the record. With that, Mr. Chairman, we'll continue to work on this, and there's other questions I have. Sidoz Masi.
Thank you. Senator, do you have any question for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Angel on the Mr. Soblan, the mayor's council hasn't had an opportunity to discuss this bill, I mean, despite the fact that it's introduced since February 22 of this year?
Yeah. That's because it wasn't on the agenda for our meetings. We've only had two private meetings, we only meet once a month now.
So you guys weren't able to discuss it in March?
We, no, we didn't, until today.
I see. I'm just concerned because, you know, we don't have any testimonies or any comments from any of the mayors.
We will be, we will, I will compile what they talked about today and we will submit it to the legislature within 10 days.
Yeah, right, okay. Thank you. The other, the other concern I had is the, in reading BBMR's testimony here, that this also affects the Guam Police Department's Highway Patrol Division. We didn't have the chief of police come down to testify on that?
I believe the chief is off island for training.
There's someone else running the department, right?
Sir, I don't make the calls.
Okay, so, you know, so Lester, let me, let me get back then to this. On the special funds, so I think Mr. Byrne just said it, when we have a special fund that is, that has a shortfall, then usually the general fund, if it has the ability to, makes it up, right? Makes up that shortfall?
That's correct, Senator, unless you can foresee that the, at the time that you're preparing the financial statements, that the current year's revenues would make up the previous year's shortfall.
Yeah. Okay, so then my question is on the bill that's currently written, if this section was totally repealed, that now the general fund will have no obligation to make up this special fund because there will be no longer a special fund to make up. Am I correct?
Well, it would have, yes and no, if I can answer in that not very helpful way, but it would make up whatever deficit currently exists. And there, and certainly in the circumstance of both these bills, since there would be a shortfall of revenue, you could not reasonably anticipate that it would be made up in the subsequent period. So whatever the resultant shortfall was, yes, it would be made up, and then, and then that obligation would stop.
I see. Thank you. Mr. Ariola, how much of the highway fund has been used for paving secondary streets?
Every year, we receive about, about $2.25 million from, from an appropriation from the legislature. The latest report, I think, shows us we're probably at like $6 million this, this year. We've been, we've been pretty aggressive this year, but then toward the end, we had a, we had a supply problem with, as you know, I've stated before, there's only one vendor that paves roads here in Guam. We've just been able to catch up just this past month, for about two months, we had, two if not three months, we, we were not paving, but we've since caught up with some, with some of our village paving. But, yeah, we spend about five to six mil a year.
Okay, that's great to hear, doing a lot of paving. The, what happened to those positions that are currently funded with this, with this special fund?
DRT does not receive any of these monies. I don't believe this, our full appropriation, at least, and especially starting this fiscal year, is coming from the general fund.
Okay, I see. All right. Thank you. I just wish the chief of police was here so we'd be able to get his testimony as well. But that's the only questions I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Tatum?
Sidoz Masi, Mr. Chair, thank you everyone for being here to testify. Sin Augustine, I'm really happy to see you, you know, still passionate about the, you know, the mass transit and being here to testify and your comments made, so they're well heard, well taken in. And of course, congratulations to your position as well. You've got big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you're just as passionate, you know, helping in this area.
Just want to, he's a great mentor. He taught me a lot.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Babauta is a great mentor. He taught me a lot.
Oh, yes. And I'm sure he's here to help you every step of the way if you need it. And it comes to a mass transit, you said that you're receiving about $11 million in infrastructure funding, is that true?
Correct, Senator.
And if the $11 million is all one time, or is it broken up in five-year periods?
It's broken up in five years, Your Honor. I mean.
So you are now, okay, so that's, yeah, so you won't be getting it all at one in bulk, okay? And mass transit received, how much in, from the special fund, the highway fund, how much did you receive last year?
I don't have that information, Senator.
Well, according to the OPA, I'm only seeing the FY 2021, I'm seeing something here that says expenditure by department from FY 2019 at an amount of 2,000, I mean, 2.2 million, 700, 2.273, 455. Is that about right?
Senator, I only have the FY 22 budget with me.
Okay, and how much was, okay, Celestine, can you remember how much was appropriated to you last year?
Yeah, GRTA received about 267,000, I believe, from the diesel tax.
From the highway fund?
No, from the liquid fuels, the diesel tax.
Okay, but what about the highway fund? Have you received any money from that? Because I'm showing here in FY 2020, you received 2.2 million.
The difference between 2.6 and 267 is what's coming from the Guam Highway Fund.
Okay, I see. Okay. So that 11 million, of course, is broken up in five, for five years, it's broken up, correct? So, okay. Next question I have is with regards to Lester, you have, you mentioned about the CRER report and about 1.1 million is already tracking below projected revenues for the highway fund. And I'm showing a new, the new report that came out, we're actually at about 10 million dollars short with all special funds, is that correct?
Hmm, one, two, six. That's about right when you add them all up, yeah?
About 10 million. And is it true that a lot of times, like what happened at the end of FY 21, that any excess revenue was used to cover those shortfalls on the special funds?
That's, that's correct, as Mr. Byrne mentioned, if there's sufficient general fund monies to cover. And when we were before you several times, we mentioned that the 21 revenues, a part of that, and I think it was about 20 million dollars, were going to be, have to be used to take care of special fund shortfalls in 21. So when we started going through the litany of how the 61 million dollars was going to be used, you know, we came up to something that we all agreed to, but it took out 20 million from that. So be, you know, cognizant of that because if these trends continue, what you see today in general fund revenue may have also to be applied for something that we have at the end of '22. And you're correct that right now it's 10, and if it doesn't improve, we're going to have to do that as well.
Right, okay. Thank you for that information. Sorry about that.
Could I just, for the record, Senator Adda mentioned that if this liquid fuel tax was repealed, the special fund would go away? That's not true. It's a 20 million dollar fund source. A big portion of that is vehicle registration fees, which isn't being considered here. So there will not be elimination of the special fund, it will just be a reduction in the revenue in the special fund.
From liquid fuel tax, correct? I mean, you're talking about the?
Correct. So about 10 million dollars of 21 million dollars is what we're talking about.
What is the percentage, by the way, of that from the Guam Highway Fund? How much of that is from the liquid fuel tax? I was told it's like 9% of the whole special fund?
If you're talking about liquid fuel tax components for the Guam Highway Fund, it's about 50%.
Yes, it's about 50%. Oh, that's good, 50. Daphne, good afternoon. You talked about all the different numbers with regards to the liquid fuel tax by kind of tax, the amounts, the 14, the 15, et cetera, down the line. So, and I'm glad you clarified that, to let people know that this is based per gallon. It's not based on the price of gas, but it's based per gallon. So if you're using, for now, like, let's say an average, and I, we did the math on this, if I'm, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I did the math with this on one of my staff who lives the furthest away, right? How much he spends on, how much gallon of gas does he use a week? And he uses about 17 gallons of gas a week, and he lives all the way in Windward Hills. And at 15 cents per gallon, and I know you're an accountant, so you can do the math on this too. So at 15 cents per gallon, which is the current rate right now, that's about, no, yes, so gas is how much? Gasoline is 15, right? And diesel is 14, right? Okay, so you take 15.15 times 17 gallons, which is a week, you come about $2.55 a week in liquid fuel taxes that are paid. And in a month, that's about $10.20, an individual who uses 17 gallons of gas a week. Is that correct?
Sorry, ma'am, so?
If a person uses 17 gallons of gas a week, how much in liquid fuel taxes is that, that he's paying?
So how liquid fuels tax works, first of all, liquid fuels tax is assessed at the wholesaler level, not at the retailer level. So the wholesaler, when they import the, when they import the fuel, they pay the liquid fuels tax on that particular fuel, that type of fuel that they import. Then the retailer at the pump will be, that's where the actual, I guess the BPT is going to be charged to the ultimate consumer, or it's going to be somehow included in the cost, that's, or the price that the ultimate consumer pays when they pay for the fuel. But if you want to, for example, if you say 15 cents per gallon, at 17 gallons, that's $2.55, right? Is that what you're trying to?
Yeah, $2.55, yeah, per week, is what a person pays for. If the, like, SPPC who brings in this gas, and then, of course, you know, they transfer this cost to the consumer, and if they're charged 15.15 cents per gallon, then of course they're going to pass it on. So we're looking at about $2.55 a week, that's $10.20, right? Okay. I just wanted to look at those numbers because it's, that's what we're dealing here, dealing with here on the amount. So people of Guam realize that that's exactly what's going on. With regards to DOA, there's a yearly, yeah, you were concerned, Mr. Byrne, that you said earlier, you were concerned that even if we were to cover the cost of the amount, if we were to repeal this law, what's going to happen in 2024, '25, and et cetera, down the line? And that's a concern too, you know, for many of us. And the excess 60 million dollars most likely will probably not be there in excess revenue in the following year because a lot of these federal funds are going to be utilized and spent, and we're not going to have that same kind of income coming in through taxes based on that. I mean, the military buildup is one thing, you know, anticipating any kind of funding, but we're having problems, difficult problems, trying to, you know, charge these companies who come off island on this military buildup to pay their taxes here on Guam too. So I understand the concern all around with that, and that 60 million may not be there at the end of this year, at the end of this, it'd be lower than 60 million, because right now the CRER is trailing at 60, correct?
Well, Senator, as Mr. Carlson just pointed out, there's a growing deficit on the general funds that is going to be, on special funds, pardon me, which will be a call upon the general fund during the current year. We don't know what the general fund surplus revenues are going to be in the future. And please, so I can be very clear, the 60 million is a surplus of, or the expected surplus of collected revenues over the appropriated revenues. So if you appropriate it, you're eating into that amount.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, Mr. Byrne, on that. Thank you, appreciate it. With Vince, thank you for your testimony with regards to finally coming, you know, I've been looking the internet, I've been looking at all these federal reports that are coming out with the infrastructure bipartisan bill, trying to find out whether this, and the amount is, that I'm showing from my research, is 95 million dollars going to cover our roads. And you have finally answered my question, is that 95 million covering non-routed roads? And finding out the testimony, it's not. And it's such a disappointment to hear that, that the federal government is not going to allow us. I mean, they're just adding to what they already give funding for, for our federal highways. They're already adding, you know, it's, so it was so disappointing to hear that they won't allow us that leverage or flexibility to use this money for non-routed roads. I mean, we're having major issues with some of these roads that, I mean, ask our mayors. I think the mayors are, have the greatest concerns about their villages and these roads not being repaired. Because the cost for vehicles, every time they hit a pothole, or, you know, have to go over these massive dips in the road that can cause a safety issue, it's scary, it's very disheartening. I've worked so hard to try and get additional funding, and that's just it. Why are we here today saying, as long as you give us the same appropriation next year, it'll be okay? No! This is the opportunity for DPW and mass transit and the mayor's office to finally get that additional funding needed for all those projects that need to be taken care of. You shouldn't settle for what you got last year and maintain that same amount. We've got this federal funding that's coming in, and that's what we should be asking for. Why should we should subtract from the budget or maintain it? That's a concern I have. And this 95 million, unfortunately, even though it's only for routed roads, which we already receive money from the federal government, is going to be broken up in five years. So that's only about, what, 19 million a year for these main highway roads that are going to be put in place. I hope you take advantage, Mr. Ariola, with the grant funding because in the infrastructure bill, there's always this 7 billion dollars, which is, you know, competitive grant, you know, it's far reaching, but I hope you continue to still try.
We will.
And because maybe that money could go to the route, non-routed roads, the village roads, maybe that could. Is it still 1 million dollars per mile? Is that still the going rate on roads?
It depends, it depends, Senator, on the condition of the road, whether it's just a simple mill and pave, or do we have to go all the way down to the base course? Depends how wide the road is, the thickness of the asphalt, there's, so there's a lot of factors, but typically, it's been, that's been the number. But I can tell you right now, construction costs just continue to climb.
Absolutely. And if you look at some of the, you know, liquid fuel tax in other jurisdictions, you'd be surprised. I mean, California is 50, I think it's 51%, what did I tell you, Senator Brown, 51 cents per gallon in California. Hawaii is 16, Hawaii 16, Puerto Rico 16. And if you remember when the liquid fuel tax was implemented in, I think it was 2017, it hasn't been touched for how many, 15 years before it was finally raised? And thank you, Mr. Ariola. And Mr. Soblon, I understand how, I mean, I listen to all your meetings, you know, monthly. Unfortunately, I was unable, this is the one time I did, I was unable to make it because of another engagement. But I don't think the mayor should settle for what they got last year. It should be increased. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tella. Senator Brown, do you have any question for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I certainly wanted to follow up on the questions by Senator Tella, certainly with regards to the roads, the secondary roads. Because I'm sure we're all aware, and I'm sure, Angel, when your mayors get together, as they always do, that's a major concern I know they individually have for their respective villages. And certainly, having been in your shoes once upon a time, I mean, in terms of complaints coming into the department, it's almost, a large portion of it's related to the roads or the maintenance of the roads or repair, or, you know, as people expand out and build in other areas, is, are, you know, is my road ever going to get paved? Is my road ever going to get repaired? Are you going to be able to put up the proper safety signage? Are you going to be able to restripe the road? I mean, the list goes on and the demands are there. Or because someone got into an accident, or their, you know, their tires blew up because they hit a big pothole. I mean, I think you're well aware of those issues that have come up. With regards to just your last year's budget for 2022, you were looking at about 2.25 million going into the village, street, and road resurfacing and repair projects. So for this past fiscal year, how much of that have you actually been able to use for your road projects? And this is, this includes everything. This is a secondary road, this is federal highway. And colleagues, don't be under the representation that because the federal government pays for the construction of the routed roads, that they are willing to carry the load of paying for the continued maintenance. Part of the agreement that Governor Guam has with federal highways, that there's a certain degree of obligation for our government to address the proper maintenance, which I know in many cases, we're behind. I mean, they could actually pull funding because we've not met our side of the obligation. That's been a consistent problem. So for you, with regards to your funding of your money, because you have such limited, I mean, 2.25 million is nothing, is absolutely nothing when you look at the bigger picture of the cost of road construction, at least of all to maintain the entire island. So where are you with that in terms of your, you know, even using up what you were asking for just this past fiscal year for 2022?
Yeah, thank you, Senator. Yes, in addition to the 2.25, we also receive a straight 2 million for contractual services for roads as well. So that comes up to about four, and then I, there's also a clause there that the funds carry over. So I believe in the last year, we've, I mentioned earlier, we're at about five or five to six million dollars on village streets paving. We did have a delay. I, I'll admit that, we had a delay toward the end of the year, 2021, and that was a supply issue, as with a whole bunch of other things. But we seem to be back on track. I believe we'll be back on track shortly. But, yeah, we were delayed several months in the village, street paving program, even in some of our federal highway projects, we were a little bit behind in one of them.
Well, so the money that you receive, and you receive a portion of it, obviously, to pay for your operations in your highway division personnel? It doesn't just include the asphalt and, you know, the paint and the reflectors? I mean, it actually pays for personnel. So for this past fiscal year, about how much of your budget goes to paying for your highway division that actually does the maintenance on your, on the roadways?
Ooh, give me a second. No, no, it's right there. Let's see. 2.2, 1.8 here. Hang on, no, that's not right. I have 4.092. And that includes, yeah, that includes the 2 million and the 2.25, so it is 1.8.
That you have that you need right now just to pay for your crew? And would you say that's adequate for the job responsibility you have?
No, you know, I'll be honest, no, Senator, you know.
Probably every director of DPW can say the same thing, maybe except Benigno Palomo, because he had a large agency, almost 1,000 back in the day, right? And DPW has since become a medium-sized agency, so. And what direct impact would this have if this was removed? Because we don't have any provision here that says what funding source will replace it. If we remove the liquid fuels tax and the revenue you receive from it, if it was to be removed entirely? Because I don't, I agree, there's no identified funding source to make up the difference, nor have we come to consensus that whatever additional revenues are there, that we're going to spend specifically for these purposes. So what impact would? gonna spend specifically for these purposes. So what impact would that have to your department?
Um, well, that's, that's why I'm here. If, uh, the, the way I read the bill was that the, the, the revenues would be reduced, some would be, um, eliminated. And if we're operating based on those revenues, and they're reduced and/or eliminated, that basically says we're, we're gone. Unless, as the speaker had, had, had mentioned earlier, that, uh, there's, there's a Plan B, and we're gonna use general fund revenues. But again, uh, I don't see that in the bill, and that, that's, that still remains to be seen.
So your road projects now, I see that you're doing paving in Santa Rita, Agate, on these secondary roads. What, where's the funding coming from for those projects?
It's coming from the, uh, these Guam Highway Fund appropriations.
Okay, so directly now, and you're actually able to go out and do these, these, the resurfacing of these roadways?
Yes.
Okay. And right now, the re-striping, I, I, happens to be in my village, as I drive home every day, uh, on Route Four. We resurfaced and repaved Route Four about ten years ago in two thousand twelve. I see now that re-striping is being done. Who, who, and who's paying for that? Is that being paid out of your local or your federal funding?
That, that's a federally funded project, an IDIQ.
Well, I'm glad to see it. I mean, I, there's definitely a need for it. I, I also wanted to ask, Angel, I know you had mentioned that your, the mayor's council has not had the opportunity to sit down and discuss or deliberate over this particular bill. Um, do you have any preliminary feedback? I, I mean, I talked to my mayor, I know what his thoughts are, but do you have any preliminary feedback on, uh, what, what the position may be of the mayor's council? And if you heard back from any of your, your mayors at this point with regards to this legislation, knowing you're gonna be here today to provide testimony?
Yes, Senator, it was discussed at our, uh, regular monthly meeting this morning. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, there is pros and cons, and there's yeses and nos from different mayors. Uh, I was busy writing some down, but I will take the recording back and transcribe that, have the secretary transcribe that, and issue that testimony to the legislature.
Do you have, on average, what a village mayor receives out of this funding for road repairs, or road maintenance, or even to buy cold mix to throw in a pothole?
In two thousand eleven, with the street maintenance and beautification, we received over a million dollars. Last year, or this fiscal year, we only receive over two hundred thousand. So as you can see, that's nineteen villagers, that's two hundred thousand. They're fighting over it with road, pavement, uh, mileage, that's, that's where they're based for their distribution. Of course, Dero is the most mileage, so she gets the most funds. And Sinahania and Homatac, who are the least mileage, they get the least out of the, uh, street maintenance. But it's not coming from the Guam Highway Fund. And that's why the Guam, the OPA has always, uh, dinged us for the use of the Guam Highway Fund, because when the legislature appropriates it, they appropriate it into our personnel. It doesn't go directly into street maintenance and beautification.
Well, but certainly if that were corrected, as it should. I mean, I think if we're telling the people they're paying it, you know, for that purpose, for road maintenance or road improvement, you know, we should, we should correct that and have it go. I mean, I understand your need for personnel, but you also have a desperate need for, for funds to be able to either contract, or you can probably, the village can do minor repairs, but obviously, the major paving and stuff has to be contracted out. I mean, I, I assume, uh, if you had more resources, you could do more.
Yes, and that's why we had asked the, the speaker, or even the, uh, chairperson of the committee of appropriations, to please amend that Guam Highway Fund law that would allow the mayor's council of Guam to, to use it.
And, and so you have received far less, I mean, two hundred thousand also in road paving is nothing. I mean, I hate to say that, but that's the reality when you look at the numbers. I mean, a bridge back then, ten years ago, I mean, to do Yilig, for example, costs like thirteen to fourteen million, just for that one bridge. I mean, you know, we're talking, you know, the old figure was always a million a mile, but that's a million a mile of a single lane. It's not, you know, a four, five, six-lane highway. So even at ninety-five million, that's nice, but it's not an awful lot for the demands, even on such a small island, so.
Yes, Senator, and for your information, back in two thousand and nine, when we had the, uh, road mileage inventory, which is actually the only current one we use right now, because there has been no update, uh, even if there was an update, it's not broken out into villages. But I can tell you that back then, there was six hundred and seventy-eight actual miles of road on Guam that are not routed roads, they're secondary and tertiary. So that's what the village mayors are dealing with, uh, trying to see how they can keep up and maintain these six hundred and seventy-eight miles of roads on Guam with the minimal amount of appropriation that we do get.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate your input. And, Mr. Chair, that, that really, for me, is, is the issue that I also look at. I mean, I, I understand the speaker's position in wanting to reduce the financial burdens, because, I mean, I anticipate our, our power bill next month, GPA's already told us, on average, you were gonna get a twenty-nine-dollar increase per family. Of course, depending on use, but an average family is another twenty-nine dollars just right off the bat. Um, and I also see, I mean, I appreciate also the testimony from the fuel companies, but I see the fuel companies also very quickly, I mean, even though they have already had the fuel taken and put in their, in their, um, you know, their gas stations, automatically overnight, already raising the price on fuel they've already received. So that, to me, is very disingenuous to the public when, when they do that, because we know they've already paid for that fuel. They've already put it in their tanker trucks, and they've already driven it to the station, and they fueled the station, and then yet overnight, because they got an increase in barrel, you know, uh, they're immediately charging that to, to the, to the consumers, where they've already paid for it. And, and it can be five cents, four cents, twenty, we've seen twenty-cent increases overnight, overnight, on fuel they already have in their tanks. So maybe they might have a different type of math they can explain to us. But that's how I look at it. And I am concerned at our ability to sustain, if we do look at another funding source, if we're removing this, obviously, there's gonna be need to look at another funding source, of how do we do that every year consistently, if we're already at a village level. And trust me, I got some potholes in my little road with my, my neighbors, that I'm gonna probably be out there myself, figuring out how I can fill it in in the interim, just because I know if we don't address it, it's gonna continue to erode. Uh, and, and, you know, we, we all know the impacts on our tires and our cars, and, and the cost, the cost for that. And I'd rather see the pendulum swing the other way, where we're actually increasing the resources to address things at the village level, because that's really a lot of demand and a lot of concern our residents have. They're concerned about crime, but one of the things they'll always ask is about their roads. And what are we doing to maintain them, or give them more resources to improve or upgrade? Because there's many people stuff Cascow Road. You know, every time it rains, I'm sure you may ask, can you bring some, you know, Cascow and deliver it, because our road is, you know, it's getting impassable. Uh, and those are ongoing, it's been forever that way. And unless we, we do something to put a little more effort into providing more resources at the village level, where our people are really directly impacted in their communities, uh, we're gonna continue to have this concern. And how do we pay for it? So, I mean, I understand the concern of the impact on the finances, but to me, I'm always looking, where's the money going? And is it going where the greatest need is, that has a direct impact on our community? And for me, in this particular case, um, you know, upgrading and maintaining our roadways, I think, is a very, very critical need, uh, that we need to actually strengthen and, and further support in our government. So I appreciate all of you for coming and providing your input, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions and provide comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Jim Moylan, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you to the panel. I want to thank the sponsor of these bills. I believe they're helpful, very helpful. Uh, what I really, really look at is that these bills will affect overall, our community overall, everybody that uses the pumps. I know we have a good program out there that's giving some money, three hundred dollars there, for a certain classification of people. But these bills affect the overall consumers that pump their tanks, so it all, it all helps. And we can understand that taxes all affects our, our cost of goods. Liquid fuel tax, BBT, now we're looking at inflation. And, uh, I can see this as, we just need some sort of relief. And even if it's just temporary relief, we just need some sort of relief. Uh, because we understand that the more we pay for fuel, the less we can purchase of our necessities, like food, shelter, and, uh, and power as well. So, uh, I appreciate the recommendations on how to strengthen these bills and what it affects. And some, there were some good recommendations also. And, uh, Mr. Byrne, you were talking about the sunset provision. I think we understand that clear on what, why that's necessary. But can you just expand just a little more for us on the benefits of this being a sunset, to have a sunset clause in it?
Uh, thank you, Senator. What I was referring to was that each of these bills reduces the take from the tax. Um, however, um, that, as has been said several times this afternoon, there's no language in this bill at this moment to replace it. Um, I, it's understood that one of the sources for replacement of this revenue would be the general fund. Um, but in order to make that work, you have to take account of that year after year after year, because this is a special fund which would roll forward year after year after If, if the provision sunsetted, then you would only have to take account of the lost revenue from, from the period of enactment to the period of sunset.
Thank you, sir. Uh, in addition to the panel's testimony here, we also heard the author of the bill read testimony from the Guam Chamber, and another good recommendation coming on through, basically saying, um, in addition to the liquid fuel tax, there's also the JRT tax on, on the, on the fuel as, as well. And what they're looking at is a, a tax amnesty on the fuel for the next two years. And they're talking like thirty cents per gallon, which is an additional savings for all. So I think that's something maybe the committee can look at, as well as all your testimonies, and I appreciate all your comments. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the panel.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel that's here today. Many of the questions have been asked already. And, um, I think, you know, these, these bills are important, because, you know, our people are suffering from these high costs in fuel. Um, I understand that there's, there must be a way to offset the cost, or to find another source, um, to make up for the, the loss in revenue for the agencies that depend upon this. Um, you know, we don't want to, um, shortchange any of the agencies and, and the services that you provide. Um, we, we know that they are very important. So if, you know, there's a way, I understand there is perhaps some, um, talk about, uh, alternate revenue source that can make up for the loss. Um, I think that would be great. Um, and in, in regards to, you know, this perhaps being a temporary measure, because we don't know what the finances of government may be, but in the meantime, you know, look for a, a future source. So I know the, uh, there has been a bill in Congress to, hopefully, if it passes, uh, it would provide tax rebates for those that, um, in need of it, and based on, uh, based on the income. So hope, I mean, perhaps I see this as a, 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 what is it, a, a measure that can help in the interim. But I think long-term wise, policy-wise, I think we need to look at, uh, other measures. And the other thing I would like to, you know, when looking at the, some of the information that was provided, uh, by, uh, Director Shimizu, it talks about the amount of fuel that has been taxed. And if you think about, you know, ninety-nine million gallons of, of gasoline, um, roughly, or ninety-nine to a hundred million gallons a year, you know, that's a lot of fuel. Uh, I am in support of, you know, fossil fuel, independence on fossil fuel, and, and, you know, alternative means, uh, alternative, um, you know, like renewable energy, solar energy. I think that's, that's the direction we should go into. So, you know, while we implement interim measures, I think we need to work towards these long-term sustainable measures. Um, and so just, just some of my thoughts. And, um, yeah, looking forward to maybe a, a second, uh, hearing or, uh, follow-up conversations on how to move forward. This is Masi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Before I ask, uh, the speaker to close on her bills, on bills, uh, two sixty and two sixty-one, just a few, few short questions. Number one, Mr. Babalta talked about, uh, electric buses, cars, and all that stuff. Vince, you brought up electric buses. What do they, what do they ride on? Are there special tires for them? I'm just curious. What are their, uh, go ahead, Mr. Babalta. Uh, you can start, make it short, because my, my nephew has one of those, okay? So I just wanna hear if you have something different.
Make it short.
What do they have four wheels off?
Mr. Chairman, let me just say that, um, when GRTA was awarded nine and a half million dollars in competitive grant.
Good, four hundred thousand dollars of that is supposed, is supposed to, to enable GRTA put together an electrification plan for GRTA, and, and the governor was asking for that amount of money to be used for an electrification plan for Guam. It's imperative that we have a plan for electrification, so that we know what kind of batteries we need to purchase, what kind of buses we need to buy, based on the environmental conditions of Guam, what kind of charging stations we need to, to build, whether it's gantry. Mr. Babalta, please pause. I only ask one simple question. What are those vehicles running on? Wheels, tires, what? What are they running on?
The electric vehicles?
Yeah, what are they running on?
They're running on, uh, battery, uh...
No, no, no. What kind of wheels they got? They got rubber wheels? They got solid wheels? What, what do they have?
Regular wheels is what I saw.
Regular tires and wheels.
The reason why I ask this is because we're talking about liquid fuel tax that deals, my understanding is that it's to repair the secondary roads. If we get rid of it, are those buses, those trucks, those whatever, would be less, it's gonna cost less for the maintenance when they run on the roads that can't be repaired? I'm just curious. I don't think so.
Mr. Chair, so, uh, I just came from, uh, I just came from a workshop in Honolulu, and I met with the Vice President of the Oahu Transit System, the Maintenance Supervisor, Mr. Andy Tamayoshi. So to answer your question about the electric buses, they do have a fleet of, uh, ten thirty-foot electric buses, which run on, uh, battery packs, and they're four hundred and forty-four, uh, kilo-watts per, per bus. So it, it holds six different batteries. So, um, they do have tires, you can charge them either in the back or the front. The electrification station is separate from the actual pump, where you put the electric, um, charger into the bus. So there's three, there's three, um, it's a three-part electrification system. You have the electric bus, you have the electrification, um, uh, power box, and then you have the actual electric pump that goes into either the front panel or the, the back panel.
Okay.
And the prices range.
Hold on, Richard.
Okay.
I think I made my statement very clear. Every vehicle on the road right now runs on regular tires. Am I correct?
Yes.
The electric vehicles will be no different, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we're all in agreement on that. When the roads can be repaired, the, the non-routed roads can be repaired, is everybody that's gonna be in electric vehicles in routed roads? The answer is no.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I, I'm trying to figure out if there's a source that needs to be identified to fund the repair of roads, or to assist the mayors in continuing to keep the folks employed to do minor repairs on roads. And I haven't heard anything. Okay? I just wanna make that very clear. And Ms. Daphne, maybe you can give me a breakdown, or Mr. Byrne, I mean, uh, Mr. Lester. Guam Highway Fund, how is it broken down? Can you give us a percentage? Because it was very clear, I think it was Senator Tella brought up, the fifteen cents is per gallon. If you look at when originally the, the electric, the liquid fuel tax was created, or when they increased it, it was to add four cents. Back then, like myself, and correct me if I'm wrong, you would buy so much fuel, because when you look at what was generated, it was something like, uh, fourteen, fifteen million dollars in two thousand eighteen. And as the years went by, the, the revenue was keep going down. And it doesn't matter, and exactly, Senator, Tye, we make it very clear, it doesn't matter what it costs per gallon. You're only gonna get fifteen cents per gallon. So as the rates go up for the cost of fuel, like it's right now, what, five eighty-nine, almost six dollars? You remove fifteen cents. If something happens and the rate goes up for the price of fuel, you recover the fifteen cents and you pay it at the fuel tank. Whatever they reduce, it'll go right back up. I'll bet money on that. There's no doubt about that. Number two, you're not gonna be able to keep people employed at, at the mayor's council, because the percentage of fuel, of funds from liquid fuel tax will automatically eliminate the employees of the mayor's council today, if this bill was to pass. the employees of the mayor's council today, if this bill was to pass. DPW won't continue to repair secondary roads? Mr. Byrne, or Lester, you can answer this question. ARP funds or any kind of federal funds that comes this way. My understanding has always been, if you get federal funding that was driven for the purpose of recovering from the pandemic and any other emergency, it's restricted to be used when you reduce your taxes on an item. If you reduce your tax, that's not the intent of the federal money. It was not to fulfill the shortfall that you caused upon yourself. Am I correct? And maybe you can clarify that, Lester?
You're absolutely correct, sir.
So, that being said, we can forget about ARP. We can forget about those infrastructure. Is there any restriction on infrastructure funds?
They're project-specific, sir. Project-specific.
Very specific. Okay. So, I guess we've got a lot of homework on our side. Figure out a funding source. If this bill is to pass on the budget side, we need to know how to take care of it. Because if this bill passes before the budget of FY23 comes into place, there's no supplemental request. There's going to be some serious problems that the agencies that receive any percentage of the highway fund that comes from liquid fuel. All right? I just want to make sure you guys all understand that, the directors and my colleagues. Madam Speaker, if you can close, I appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to point out some of the things that have been said. I wanted to thank you first for holding this hearing on these bills. I believe they're very important, and I'm glad to see the fiscal team is here. I'm hoping that we will have an opportunity to act on Bill 261 this month, the bill that repeals the entire liquid fuels tax, if it can be reported out, and we can assist the community immediately to relieve their suffering from the dramatic increases in the cost of living. And I understand that there are some concerns and that this is being perpetuated here by many who are present, that mayors and agencies appropriations are going to be impacted. There is nothing in this bill that impacts your appropriations, none. You still are entitled to the same amount. If you read the fiscal FY22 budget, that amount that you were entitled to, you are still entitled to. You are entitled to those amounts by a separate provision not at all included in this bill. This bill talks about liquid fuels taxes that are going to be collected and deposited into the highway fund, not any of your appropriations. And it doesn't repeal the highway fund, because the highway fund is still funded by other sources as well. And it will continue, because we have not repealed that in this bill either. Repeal of the liquid fuels tax will reduce revenues going into the highway fund. I admit that. But I am asking these agencies, what do you care where your source of funds come from? Would you prefer they come from the backs of the taxpayers directly when they fill up for gas? Or would you prefer that the government of Guam prioritizes the $62 million excess funds and pays for what you're currently appropriated and more if that's what you need? If you need more, this is your opportunity. There's $62 million in excess funds. I'm saying relieve the taxpayers and pay your agencies out of that $62 million. It's only $10 million that you need. That's what you've been appropriated, and I'm saying there's no reason you should not In prior fiscal years, last fiscal year, there was a $3 million shortfall in your special fund. That was covered by the general fund. There's a current $1 million shortfall in the Guam Highway Special Fund, the one that you're talking about today. That's apparently being covered. There's been no fiscal realignment sent down here to reappropriate the $62 million. There's nothing that the administrations come down here to say, oh-oh, we can't fund GRTA or the mayors or DPW. Those things should be covered if we are going to apply the same rules that this fiscal team has told us for FY19, FY20, and FY21. And that is, when there are shortfalls in these special funds, they cover them, whether we approved it or not, they covered them with general fund excess revenues. When we tried to put $10 million in excess revenue to the hospital, they denied that. But they said they could, without any authority, cover shortfalls in special funds, and they And we relied on that when we recently went in for other bills, including war claims. We recently repealed, I think it was Bill 202, was recently signed by the governor into law. They had a ceremony and everything. That bill said, we're going to repeal the GRT, the business privilege tax down to 3%. There was no source of funding cited there. They were reducing revenue. That's what we're reducing. That's what we are doing here as well. We are reducing revenue and making sure, obviously, by not repealing the appropriations, that those appropriations are going to be covered with our excess revenues. That's what they've claimed to do in the past. That's what they claimed to do in FY21. And that's what we are all expecting to happen, because there is almost every special fund has a shortfall this year, and we expect those to be covered. I agree. Some of my colleagues want more projects to be done, more road repairs. Absolutely. It was very frustrating when we passed the increase to the liquid fuels tax to learn that we were only going to get $3 million. And with $3 million, every mayor was only going to receive one, two, three at the most projects. And if we were going to cover the mayor's list, it would take us years and years and years. So, we are so grateful that in addition to our local appropriations and our $62 million in excess, that we are going to be receiving ARP and infrastructure money, hopefully, to address as many projects as possible. There is going to be no reduction of your appropriations. Because of the legislature's very conservative budgeting, meaning we have appropriated, not in excess of what we anticipated, but far below, very conservative. We have had excess funds in the past, recently, and I want to read into the record these surpluses that the government had have. $35.6 million surplus, according to the OPA audit for FY2019. $46.3 million surplus from the OPA audit for FY2020. $62 million surplus un-audited at this point, according to the CRER for FY2021. That means surplus, meaning the legislature did not appropriate it, meaning it's pretty much up for grabs to cover shortfalls in special funds, to cover over expenditures by agencies, to cover, what did they call it? To cover deficits, to cover whatever they decide. And I am asking my colleagues and the people of Guam to support me in prioritizing that we are going to cover what is currently being funded by taxes on fuels with this type of money, this excess funds. That's all. We're saying, we agree, you need to prepare roads. I have been on your case every single year when you come in here for budget to account for how you have spent. And it's very frustrating when there are delays, that we are limited in how many roads we can actually repair, not necessarily because of funds, but because of the contractors' availability and other things that are limiting us. Because I think if we could repair all those roads right away, then show it to us, and we'll put more money there. The bill does not touch GPD's budget. Our separate provisions of law making appropriations to GPD, DPW, the mayors, and others, it's based on the premise that BBMR and Department of Administration have told us for FY21 in previous years, that they will be applicable for the second half of FY22. Only half. So, the BBMR estimate that they gave us of $10 million impact, it's actually only going to be five, because that was an annual estimate, and this bill is going to be passed, if it's passed, six months into the year. So, they would only need to cover $5 million shortfall in the highway fund, based on a reduction of, or repeal of liquid fuels tax. Save the consumers, in other words, $5 million, and find that elsewhere. Prioritize it over and above spending on any other things, creation of new divisions, the, you know, hiring at levels above the current staffing patterns, whatever, wherever. This is a matter of prioritization. This is our job here at the legislature to prioritize, and I say prioritize these projects, but not on the backs of the people. Prioritize it with the excess funds that we have available to us. There's nothing to prevent the legislature from coming here and prioritizing the rest of the $62 million. We saw that. That's exactly what happened with the FY21 excess funds. They came in bill after bill and appropriated, and nobody said there was a problem with that. And I'm saying, give them the relief now. Let's not wait. If we can, if we are pretty confident in these numbers, and it looks like everybody's very confident, then let's give them the relief now. Every other accommodation in FY23 in the future budgets will have to acknowledge that there's not as much in the highway fund as there used to be, and we need to prioritize those projects out of general fund revenues. The repeal of the liquid fuels tax is the one concrete way to impact the price of gas on Guam. There is no other solution, despite the theories of the gas gouging by gas companies or any other theories that people have put out there. There is no solution on the table. In fact, everyone has admitted that consumers need relief in gas. This is consistent with the program in Salaf bit, where we are giving relief, $300 gas cards to every household. I fully agree with that. I think it's necessary, and I'm glad, and I hope it's done sooner rather than later. But I also think that one household, it's not enough. And if we want these people who are working to continue working, to continue not to decide between food or gas, get the food. Take care of your kids. Let us relieve you of the gas price, at least in the amount that we can control. And this is the only amount that we control. We don't control what happens around the globe with oil. We don't control Congress. We control this. This liquid fuels tax was imposed by a previous legislature. It can be reduced by us, and it can be repealed by us. And all it would take is for us to continue to say, these are still priorities, but we're funding it differently. And these gas companies have assured us that these savings will be passed to the consumer. So, I say we take them up on it, and let's do this. I want to thank again all of you who've come to testify, and thank you, Mr. Chair, again for having this hearing. Sisus Massey.
There being no additional individuals to testify on Bill 260-36LS or 261-36LS. The committee will continue to receive testimony and accept any additional information or public testimony on these, on those two bills. You may submit your testimony to the Maryland or the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoassinaukstein@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. Bill number 260-36LS and Bill 261-36LS is duly heard by the committee, and the public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 4:07. Sisus Massey, for your time. Please be safe. Thank you.